President, tonight we have Mr. Andre, Mrs. Coulter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Yancho, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bush, myself, Mr. Anderson, Jeremy, and I gotta say, I'm gonna get this one, Andy Armont.
Yeah, close enough.
Listen up, okay.
Yep.
And Jill from Giffords and Webster. Okay, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And has everybody got a chance to look at the agenda? No changes to the agenda proposed?
Nope.
Okay.
Move approval.
Move approval by Mr. Bush. Support by Mr. Hoffman or Mr. Yancho. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Done. And approval of the minutes from our October 12 meeting. Mr. Yancho?
I've reviewed the minutes and I believe they are correct and I would ask for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve. I'll support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a few people in the audience tonight. This is our opportunity for public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to address the planning commission? No? Okay. Any further? Alright, no public comment. Correspondence.
None.
I didn't see any, okay. No correspondence tonight either, great. And let's start with old business, site plan review 1094, Tommy's Express Car Wash. This is for a extension of a previously approved site plan.
Yes, so the preliminary approval has already been done, and I have already granted a six-month extension. They're asking for their final six-month extension and they per change to our ordinance that we just did a while ago, they needed to come before all of you folks tonight in order to get an additional six-month extension.
Okay. And as I understand, reading the packet, there's no change or anything proposed, it's just a delay.
Correct. And we do have a representative from Tommy's Car Wash here.
Okay. Do you feel you need to address the board? Are you comfortable or?
I am not.
Okay. Any discussion on the commission on this one?
Jeremy, do you approve of, is there anything unusual that we should know about?
No, is in your packet you have a letter from the applicant stating that they've been working with, through issues with cost and contractors and with the onset of winter weather upon us, they're asking for that additional six months in order to get through county approvals, things of that sort, so that way in the springtime they're ready to rock and roll and they can get final site plan and then start construction.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one quick thing?
Yes.
So I know there was a change to allow, and I think it was a good change to, you know, bring the extension before the planning commission, obviously giving you authority. Could you give us a quick rundown, should, let's say, we go through this extension and come, you know, the six months, what happens at that point?
If we, if the six months runs out, they will have to start from square one again. They will have to resubmit all site plans, making sure everything's up to today's standards, not two years ago's standards. Things in that could be parking requirements, setbacks, anything that's today that we've approved in the last two years, they would have to conform to those standards that are on the books and approved today.
So does the, does the extension extend to start of construction, issuance of building permit? Where, can you give also a little bit about what constitutes the extension to, you know, six months, what constitutes the start or fulfillment of that?
So they need to get all of the Genesee County approvals to me and then I can give them the final site plan approval and then they can apply for building permits.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the extension of site plan review 1094 for Tommy's Express Car Wash.
I'll support.
Motion, Mr. Johnson, support Mr. Andre. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm here for a quick meeting.
Okay, we'll move on now to new business, our text amendment discussions, spreadsheet we have before us. Jeremy, do you want to start on this one?
Andy's gonna take this one today.
Yeah, I'm fine taking it, thank you. So we presented you with the spreadsheet in the packet, that's kind of the ongoing tracking sheet for amendments determined by master plan, amendments determined by staff, or identified by staff, and amendments that have also been discussed by staff in Giffords, Webster through the past couple of years. So I wanted to just maybe focus our efforts to a few of the master plan priority items, see how you feel, just get a read from you on if we want to move forward with any of those at an upcoming date. I mean, we, a lot of these items were listed in the master plan and I don't think they've been touched yet, so they're just items that if the, if the plan specifies these items and if the community really wanted to see some of these items take place, then I recommend that, you know, maybe the commission move forward and moving forward with some of these priority items if you feel, if you feel that way as well. So happy to discuss any of these, align zoning with infrastructure, expand housing types, consider expanding the village mixed-use areas and as well as getting some Saginaw Street corridor standards in place. So those are really the four highest priority. Jeremy, if you have anything to add on to that.
Just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move one of those to the top of the list if we could in the next meeting or two, the parking standards, with all of the things that are gonna be coming, and all with Tech Village, Enterprise Park, projects that are there. We've had to do some land bank parking agreements and only because they didn't need all of the, especially in industrial, when you get into industrial, the parking standards, it grows exponentially as the square footage goes up and it gets out of hand very quickly. Not so much in commercial, there might be a little bit in commercial, but I'd really like to focus on industrial, commercial as a secondary, but with all the projects I know we have coming and could be coming soon, that's gonna be a big focus, so I'd like to move that to the top of the list.
Parking space standards?
Yes.
To the top.
Number of required parking spaces. Because if you remember, we already changed the size from nine by 18 to 10 by 20.
Yep.
A few months ago, but I'd like to see the number, the numbers looked at, just to make sure that, especially in industrial, that they get blown out of proportion very quickly.
Yeah. Okay.
And I know Mr. Yancho probably want to take a look at our landscaping standards we had at our zoning conference in the fall, there was a lot of things that were discussed regarding landscaping.
Yeah.
That's a hot topic as well.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
So that would be something that I think needs to definitely.
And that's kind of things like species, prohibited species.
Yeah.
And some of those species diversity type of standards, right? Commissioner Yancho?
Yes. From the seminar, the educational seminar we attended, I and several others of us have identified some things that we might want to change. I have some handouts that I'd like to give, I just don't, I only have three of them, but for anybody that's interested, I have some handouts in that regard.
Okay, we can put that on the priority list and figure out a discussion memo for you on each of those at an upcoming meeting, parking and landscaping, tree species and trees diversity.
Spacing.
Spacing, planting standards for healthy.
Purchase standards.
Yep.
Sure. Great. Okay. I think Andy might have one.
I've got one of those handouts, yep, yep. USDA manual, yep.
You got one of those as well. Okay, well, you want to start the discussion on that now, present on the board, or is that we want to address in more detail or further meeting?
No, I know, it's something we need to just, I just want to kind of prioritize. I know we got ones and twos on some of these things.
Yeah, I guess one question in terms of parking is, do we have any preliminary thoughts? Are you trying to maybe open it up to more of like what the market demands in terms of parking rather than a base minimum that is set by a random, sometimes arbitrary number? I mean, do you want to give a little bit more flexibility overall, allow the applicant to maybe have a little bit more say in providing a number and then you base your review off said number?
I think the portion of that in there would help because I know what I've been requiring in order to have the planning commissioner, the site plan review move forward on a couple of these projects is have number of employees on peak shift. That has really helped with the numbers to show what the book required and what the actual applicant is asking for. So I don't know.
More employee in-person base rather than a square footage number that isn't always relevant when you have huge facilities that are being occupied.
Right, and maybe if there's a certain number of small base minimum that they need to have, but then if they can prove that they only need X amount with planning commission approval based on peak employees per shift, then we can base that number, I don't know how that wording works, but does that make sense?
I think that's a, that's good information to go from. Anything else in that spreadsheet?
Anything else that we're missing, that's not on the spreadsheet maybe that we want to take a look at too? I think we've pretty much hit all of the major, all of my sticky notes and my zoning ordinance that I've blown apart since I've been here, so I think we've pretty much nailed all those. I'll go through that again in greater detail in the upcoming months and stuff and see if there's anything I missed, but I think we've pretty much hit all the big talking points that we wanted to get through.
Mr. Hoffman?
Since going back to the master plan.
Yep.
Because in the annual report coming up too, I believe, we'll want to make sure we're kind of tracking what the commission has done to meet the master.
Mr. Hoffman, you got a comment?
So, I don't know if this.
You can do it.
So I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, but it seems to be that some of the ordinances, we have trouble policing them. So as we're discussing the ordinances that need to be policed, do we need to be discussing that in how we word ordinances or how we can work with them?
Do you have an example?
The Walmart parking lot that has semi trucks.
Well, that's, it's interesting that you say that because there is a first reading for a amendment to that parking lot requirement at next week's township board meeting. So we're, we're working on those things, it's just, it's not a zoning ordinance, it was a PUD, so it's, it goes to the township board for them to discuss and reopen back up, so, but that is being, as part of that amendment is, that's being discussed on how we're going to enforce that, yes.
Because it's a good point about creating ordinances that are enforceable. And there's no point creating standards and having a whole list of things if you can't enforce it and make people stick to them. We talked about it when we talked about RV parking, I think that was probably one of the things where it just became so cumbersome to figure out how we were going to enforce standards about when people could or couldn't park in their driveways that then we have that now the season where you can just park and it's dealt with, except for in a homeowners' association where they maybe don't allow and that's up to them to enforce on their own. I would say if there are repeated things that you think are ordinance standards that we just keep seeing people violating, then we should look at those and say, what are we, what is, what are we trying to fix and why can we not fix it here? What do we need to do with that? And then I think always being mindful of that whenever we're making new ordinance language, how do we enforce this? If we go to the parking thing, we talk about deferred parking maybe or land banked parking, we have that in the ordinance, you know, if the planning commission observes that there's a problem over, I forget what the period is, it's maybe, I forget what the timeline is, but you, then the planning commission lets them know the applicant or the developer or the building owner, property owner, that there's a problem and they need to look at making that improvement. So that's one of the things that we, that you do, that's an example of an enforcement strategy.
Just wanted to bring it up, you know, a nod to, I mean, we could do all the work in the world, but it's not enforced. I mean, some of the landscaping situations is the same, you put it in and then within six months it's dead, so what do we do? I mean, why do we have the ordinance if we don't, we say if we don't.
Right.
So just, I'm not trying to have ordinances that have teeth that we can give people, I'm just saying, you know, if this is what we're gonna be.
If it's important to you, yeah.
Work it out with the person who thinks that makes sense.
Agreed.
Just want to make sure of that, so thanks.
Yeah, so I'm in charge, I think I've told you, I'm in charge of code enforcement as well, so if there's issues and you think something's being missed that our enforcers aren't seeing.
Right.
Definitely let me know and I'll have them go out and take a look at it, because we are still reactive, not proactive, so if they may not see it, you drive by it every day, but they may not, so.
Right.
If you see something that's egregious or not egregious, but you know it violates our zoning ordinance, please definitely let me know and I, we will take care of it.
And I think it's a good point to just keep in mind as we make any kind of amendment, how are we gonna enforce this? What's the mechanism? What's the process? Good.
Okay, Mr. Yancho, you got a comment?
I was gonna bring this up under reports, but for the third time today I called police dispatch because there was a car hauler trailer parked on Holly Road in front of Randy Wise's BMW and unloading a vehicle and, you know, I was instructed that we should be calling the township police regarding that, but the dispatcher kind of was not very receptive of my comment that a police officer should respond, and so I want to make sure that I'm following or that our ordinances support that and that the, our police department's aware of that.
Yep, and just so you guys are, and I can't remember if I told you guys or not, but there's, they are expanding their parking lot over there, so that shouldn't be a problem in the near future. It shouldn't be doing now, they should have enough room to pull in and out, but in the near future that shouldn't be happening. But yeah, definitely keep calling dispatch, if you don't get that, definitely call Dennis, call me, call Scott Bennett, call, call anybody that you know that you've got a phone number for if, if there's something being missed.
Don't call.
Like I said, well, that's what we're here for, we're here to take care of these problems, so they shouldn't be doing that.
Okay. Pretty good with everything else on here as far as any for the discussion, maybe a little bit on the temporary sheds, but other than that, I'm.
Temporary.
Anybody else?
We already, which one?
Temporary sheds, I think it's the third or fourth one from the top.
We already took care of that.
Yeah, we did that on 14.
I'm okay the way it is, I guess, I don't like that idea too much, but I think we have to allow it, I guess, to some extent.
Well, this is, this is just an ongoing of what we've, we've done since, so anything that's got an effective date has already been done, and then the ones that are all open.
Yeah.
Well, there's one on the front, the traffic study on the front, and then EV vehicles we'll have to discuss, but yeah, basically everything on the second page is things that we'll need to address going forward.
Good with that.
So you're not looking to compel us to work on any discussion memos on anything other than landscaping, parking, and those two? Nothing else you'd like to see right now?
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, sorry to, since parking's brought back up, yeah, no, that's a big issue and, you know, because of the larger sized vehicles, we've tried to minimize and things of that nature. So as far as cutting down the parking, you know, and how do you do that? Would larger spots in a larger alleys help the turnaround of cars? And what I mean by that is, somebody's going into like a fast food restaurant, you know, they're only gonna be in there and out, but if it, if they're so tight, it takes them forever to back out, somebody's waiting for them to get in, so maybe you don't need more parking spaces if you actually make them bigger. I just, there's, I think there's more ways to minimize the number of spots, you know, we don't have to add spots necessarily to, because that's probably only in peak hours, so maybe if they can get in and out faster, I just, I'm not trying to think out of the box, but I think that's gonna solve a problem too, if we have spots that aren't so hard to get in.
Yeah.
People can get in and out faster, you know, without a problem. I don't know, just something, but yeah, parking is definitely a problem.
You have a comment, Mr. Johnson?
A question. So if we do adopt the new parking standards, anybody that resurfaces or restripes a lot, would they be required to then make their spots wider?
Yes.
Okay. I would.
Resurfacing, no. Re-site for, come in for a new site plan approval, yes.
Okay. Making any changes to their existing parking.
Correct.
Size or?
Right, yeah, if you were just coming in for.
If you just grandfathered in, I mean.
Or re, yeah, if you're just restriping, then, because your parking lot's, you know, dilapidated and you're just, you do a top coat and you're gonna restripe it, yeah, no, you could.
Yeah, that's an existing structure.
It's existing, but when you come in for a new site plan.
Thank you. And I would, on this, and I don't know if it goes to what Mr. Hoffman said or not, minimum parking spots for a commercial building would be much more flexible to me because you, nowadays you build a 200,000 square foot building, but with modern machinery and computers on it, you have 50 employees.
Right.
You don't have to require 200 parking spots based on the square footage of the building, but with a retail where cars are in and out frequently, they don't, picking up their meals, it's like, yeah, bigger spots are very important and the number of spots are very important.
Right.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment that when we have the discussion about parking, we want to be very mindful of what's going on downtown at the old Hamity store. There is never a parking spot there.
Right.
There is not enough parking and the city approved all those businesses. So when we're thinking about reducing, we also need to be mindful of that development down there, you can't park.
Right, and that's my comment as far as that type of business stuff. I want to make sure we allow proper parking for that, whereas so much for a manufacturing plant, I'm willing to be a little more flexible. Okay.
Yes.
I was just gonna sort of add in on that. I think our instinct, at least our, our instinct would be to reduce all the parking requirements, eliminate parking standards, let people figure it out, with the goal of having fewer parking spaces, fewer square footage, less square footage for parking lots, but the reality is, we have already drives to get where they're gonna go, and to your point, we can't, we just can't. From a practical standpoint, we always do that, and it's important to be mindful of, okay, if, if this lot is full, where will people go? And if there is no other option, then we get kind of stuck with, we have to accommodate that on-site, we can't always just let people figure it out, because then people are gonna be parking in places they're not supposed to be, like someone else's property, or running up and down residential side streets, which may not be satisfactory to residents as well, so, there's a little, there will be a balance. I think for the industrial though, for sure, those sites are usually larger, they're usually places where they can be added later in terms of land banked parking or deferred parking. Let them build what they think they need now and make sure they have room later if they need to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's more of the warehousing is where it really.
Yeah.
Just.
Based on square footage.
Exponentially, yeah, because based on square footage, I mean, it just, it blew up and the, it was a sea of parking spaces on the last project and it just, it didn't make any sense. They, the number of employees they had on the peak shift was a third of what they were required, so that's, that was more of where this was kind of going. I wasn't saying everything needed to be, everything needs to be looked at, because we should every, you know, a few years, look at everything, but are we gonna change everything across the board? No, 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 that's not my intention.
Right. Okay, thank you. Further comments or discussion on that one? Okay, move forward. There's no motion required for that one.
Nope.
And up next we have a Tech Village refresher. Back to Matt, so, handle that one.
Oh, shit, I think, oh, shut up.
Everything, shut up. It was just there.
One was on a second ago.
It's been, I'll let one, there you go.
No. Right.
It's been a few years since we've talked about Tech Village and with some interest in the area, we thought it would be really useful to kind of revisit the history of it, where it came from, what the intent is, and then dive in a little bit, not really dive in, get, touch on briefly what the ordinance, how the ordinance is structured. We don't need to go line by line through it because it is a rather lengthy section of the code, but I think seeing this background will help you understand then what, where those regulations came from. So we've got a few little things to show you here. So this was the original slideshow that we prepared in December of 2016, so it's been a minute since we prepared this. And even before that, the project initially started, the Tech Village idea started in 2008, so a couple of you were on the planning commission, you were not on the planning commission.
On the board.
Yeah. Jay was, Dolores was.
Who was on the board?
You were on the board, right, and Mike, you came in a little bit later.
I think that was on the planning.
Later, yeah. What I think is really interesting is, is the whole Tech Village beginning idea came from our concepts of what the new economy was going to be, the knowledge economy, you know, coming out of, into the middle of the earlier part of the 21st century, thinking about the kinds of jobs that were gonna be created, the kind of places that people would be attracted to, and focusing on, on that knowledge-based worker who could be going anywhere but would like to be in a place. So, we know that, that what happened was, the recession happened right as soon as this plan was drafted and things kind of went on hold. The area was around the areas that were R and D around the health center district and light industrial, so in this sort of rectangle in the south end of the, of the township. This 2007 kickoff, and you, if you heard me talk about it in 2016, you might remember me saying I was not working with Burchler Royal and in 2007, I didn't join them until 2008, but in 2007, I came to this event at the invitation of Keith Edwards because we were former city planners together in the city of Birmingham, and he called me and he says, you gotta come up to this, this is gonna be really, really cool, and this is a great event, we got all these people coming, and so I went and I was really impressed with the quality of the program, the people that were there, it was really visionary, and I thought, wow, this is tremendous, and who would have thought that we would be doing something like this, you know, in this area? And it was, I think it was a success in terms of its initial launch. I think a lot of people were engaged in the process, a lot of people had ideas about what could be located here and what it could mean for the rest of the township. This was just some of the, the people that were there, you had folks from the Brookings Institution, you had people from Michigan State, Oakland County Automation Alley, the Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce, Rod was there, the Genesis Health Network, Health System, the airport, Bishop International Airport, and the Mass Transportation Authorities, where a lot of people that were involved with economic development, transportation, thinking about growth and sustained growth for the state of Michigan and how it could be done here in Gremlin Township. So there were about 120 people, people from all over the region, and then you had a series of workshops and input sessions, and eventually the goal was the Tech Village Plan called for a conceptual site plan of the mixed-use Tech Village, Tech Village area that respectfully integrates the rural character and area and the natural features present throughout. And so again, there was just a little bit more of that. So the project goals then were, I think I'm going to go back, yeah, of this project were to create a high level of uses in this area, research, development, light industrial, office, commercial, and multiple families. So a lot of mixing of uses, creating walkable streets through compact and efficient developments. We may get back to that parking conversation. Create civic space, common areas, walking paths, and natural areas. A major landscape element along I-75 to draw attention. Establish a high level of architectural controls expressing a consistent theme. So this was really envisioned to be a standout development in the region that would attract high tech businesses and people to the area who wanted something innovative and different. We at the time, so this is back in 2016, district about 4,000 acres, including Genesis Health Park, 500 acre campus. That was the regional medical center, medical office buildings, and a wellness facility and conference center. The concept plan that was put together in 2016 focuses on about 200 undeveloped acres in two parcels at the time in the triangle bounded by I-75, Saginaw, and Baldwin. As you know, those parcels have really beautiful wetlands and woodlands. It's got really interesting and challenging topography and natural features, but then rendering that to be a very unique opportunity for building and opportunities for not only signature headquarters and business office space, but also opportunities for recreation. A feature of the area is its regional and international accessibility. So this is very, very well located on I-75. We've got at the time 50,000 to 70,000 vehicles travel through the township on I-75 every day. Plus, we've got access to downtown Flint with I-69 that runs from the Canadian border crossing in Port Huron to Indianapolis and carries 85,000 daily vehicles just north of the township, plus the proximity to the airport. So if you look at the existing conditions, there's about 50 acres of wetland. So that's pretty significant and very significant development constraints there. And there's a development on the north end, residential development that also includes some buffer requirement, I believe it was 100 feet away from that. So it's another development constraint. So we're kind of looking at where we can be doing this kind of development. Back in 2016, I should back up because I missed a little chunk. Between 2008, that plan was left as a as a draft report, a study. And in 2012, it was incorporated into the township's master plan as this is the vision for the township. This is what we're doing. And the implementation items that were associated with that plan included doing a market study and creating zoning language and a concept plan to really take this to the next level. Take that that vision and the 2008 study to the next level and really demonstrate what that looks like to the marketplace. At the time in 2016, the township partnered with the two property owners to do this study. And so that included this market assessment. Now, this is all based on 2016. So this part is probably different. But then, so we're looking at the township population, noting the average age of Grand Lake Township residents continues to increase. That probably is still valid. Oh, interesting. Retail is changing where, when, and how people shop. And guess what? It still is. So we've talked about COVID and its impact on retail and how we shop and how online shopping is is so much different. These were things that were happening before, right? They just got accelerated during COVID. So thinking about smart mobile devices, enabling consumers to shop anywhere at any time, virtual showrooms, entertainment increasingly being a component of the shopping experience. And I think that's still very much true today. Housing is changing to reflect the demographic shift. So both millennials and even the Gen Zs now and baby boomers are seeking more walkability, in some cases, lower maintenance, and they do want amenities as well. Manufacturing technology is changing the way goods are processed and assembled with some of the different examples here of 3D printing and automation, too. So there was a residential market forecast for Tech Village that between 2016 and 2026, 625 new housing units. And that was considered to be a mix of housing and a dense walkable development pattern. For the non-residential retail, based on the new households, about 200,000 square feet of new retail, general merchandise, transportation and utilities, hardware and restaurants. Traditional office, about 60,000 square feet in the regular standard professional type settings. That is probably something that would be very different today with our working from home situations, but probably not completely out of the mix. R and D office, 350,000 square feet. So in in parts of the industry like 100% automated food preparation, food server robotic equipment, surgical robots, pharmaceutical and dispensing. So a lot of robotics, robotic security, robotic salespeople, 3D printed office and clothing manufacturing. I know that when I do remember this, in 2016, the item of non-weaponized and weaponized drones that appeared on the list, I think, was alarming to some folks who were very concerned that that was going to be happening on site. But I think it was just an example of an industry that defense related industry, but looking at new technologies and new equipment and things that could be innovated here. It was an example. It wasn't intended to to be an actual use that was going to be envisioned. So we looked at a couple other examples of similar kinds of research and development parks. We looked at the West Michigan Business Technology and Research Park in Kalamazoo. That's affiliated with Western Michigan. It's 265 acres. There was a smart zone there that allowing allowed for some tax revenues that were generated on site to be returned and invested in there for infrastructure upgrades. There was a Central Park area with walkways throughout. There was a curved roadway system. Native plantings, wet ponds were focal features. It had unified lighting and signage standards. There were minimal curbs on the roadways, paved shoulders used as bike lanes, bus transit for students, and outdoor seating area. So things that enhance the natural features of that area, providing some relief for people who might be working in that area as well as making the area more walkable. Some of the images from that, really high quality architecture and a variety of stormwater management methods. So they had some open water areas. They had some wetland areas. And then they had some naturalized and manicured streams. So this is just a few examples from there. There was the Bosch North America Research Center in Plymouth Township, 75 acres. Again, a feature of this park is the native prairie plantings, the landscaping, looking at bioswales, bold masses of ornamental grasses, really kind of emphasizing that feature and quality architecture as well there. There was Prairie Stone Business Park in Chicago, Illinois, 780 acres, 445,000 square feet. Another mix of uses, including residential, public gathering spaces. They included a 12 park 12 acre park with an amphitheater with 1,000 seats. Wet ponds as focal features, more native plantings, unified lighting and signage standards, and an entertainment district. So now we're starting to get into, you know, much more of a place here. And you can see some of that beer garden, outdoor seating, a lot of the natural features, stone, the water, the landscape materials, and then that center focal point of that amphitheater there, too. And so looking at that from the industrial park, the research park, office park standards, then also thinking about creating this downtown type vibrant walkable district. And so thinking about what those might look like in terms of precedent images, two to three story buildings, again, another mix of uses, looking at retail, restaurant, office, and residential. The buildings would have ample ground floor windows and architectural details, all there to help the pedestrian, to lead them down the street and have them walk and explore further. And a variety of architectural styles and materials that contribute to a style of authenticity. Not wanting to just plop down all of the buildings all at once and have them all look the same, but really try to be more intentional about this building is done by this architect. Maybe have another building that's done by a different architect. They're compatible, but they're not all the same. And they look like maybe they've they've been there over time. Looking at streets and thinking about streets that accommodate vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists, incorporating on-street parking, unique paving techniques and landscaping to create places where people want to be. And these are just a few examples of places where we're mixing people on foot, on bicycle, and in a car in some of these different areas. Gathering spaces. So also thinking about place making and creating opportunities for people to gather, whether there are formal events or informal events. Spaces could be private or semi-private that serve maybe an office building itself, or maybe it's an office building or like a medical use where people are coming and going, or they have customers or clients coming and going. And then maybe some public spaces as well, flexible spaces with opportunities to host events and other activities. And then thinking about service areas. What happens with the loading and unloading? What about utilities? Where do we put all that those things? And then focusing here, seeing some examples of how those functions tend to happen behind the buildings, parking behind the buildings, and then creating mid-block crossings. So opportunities for people to get from the front of buildings to the back of the buildings by way of an alley or a passeo, which is like an alley, and other passages to connect the parking areas to the main street area. Sustainability was also a really important part of the study. I think and I probably will get to it in here, but I think it's worth noting that this is intended to we're intended to see development happen here and things happen here as like a test case, as a model, as a project, pilot project for things like solar, things like sustainable development practices where we can point to this and say, look at this great innovative pilot project that we've started here at Tech Village. We'd like to see this applied elsewhere in the township so that it it becomes part of the whole community. But this be like the testing ground for it. So then thinking about sustainable site practices, innovative stormwater management techniques, and a variety of techniques. So we can have rainwater harvesting, rain gardens, wetlands. And just a couple of those examples here. And again, solar and wind energy structures can be used on buildings as well as throughout the sites. We've got some structures up on top of buildings as well as maybe some panels if there's if there's locations for that, too. Quality landscaping, noting that landscaping helps mitigate the heat island effect. Using native plantings help with the long term management of the landscaping. Again, your point about making sure that things are sustainable, that they stay well maintained over time, that maybe they're a little bit lower maintenance, maybe less water that they need. Looking at EV charging, transit opportunities, and car sharing. So again, thinking about mobility in a different way and letting this place accommodate that in whatever form it might be. So this was the conceptual concept plan, the illustrative plan that was developed in 2016 that that continues to use those those that same space and looking at different districts. So having an office medical district up on the north side, a little bit closer to Genesis, having that research and development district in the middle, balanced by the opportunity to allow some of those views of those natural features, the wetlands there. And then the village center district, that compact district that's along Saginaw that would be the lead in, that would have maybe more of your restaurants, your retail, your residential opportunities that maybe people are living there and then they're working out in the other parts of the of the district. So the office medical district coming in off of Baldwin, interconnected pathways for non-motorized circulation. And then a description of how many square feet was anticipated with this concept plan and looking at the parking that was associated with that, too. The research and development district connecting the office and medical to the village center. So more interacted interconnected pathways. About 15 buildings identified from 10,000 to 60,000 square feet. Some live work residential, about 30 units of that, three park areas, one with a pavilion for special events, and 773 parking spaces. Then the village district, about 17 buildings of two stories in height, 67 live work residential, and more parking spaces there with that as well. So the site components, elements that contribute to the identity for Tech Village, looking at pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, so streets and sidewalks being very important throughout the site to provide mobility in a variety of modes. Whether someone is walking or riding a bike or potentially riding an e-bike was something that we didn't even think about back then, or driving a car as well. Looking at the standard right of way and what that looks like with the curbs and the lawn area. But then thinking about how we can enhance that by adding in bioswale or native landscape, maybe reducing some of the drive travel lanes to allow for a multi-use path along the sides and giving us more space for other things besides just creating the roads for cars. Also creating a cross section for the village area with a little bit wider sidewalks to accommodate other things like outdoor dining or things like that that you would see in a downtown area along with street trees and on-street parking. Gateway signage, really important to identify the area and think about wayfinding through the site as well. Again, thinking about things, and you've done some some work with signage here. So this might then echo what you're starting to do with the new logo and things like that. But carrying that throughout. So thinking about the materials at the gateway, so machine cut stone, corten steel, stainless steel, decorative block, exposed concrete, Michigan fieldstone. Maybe there would be other things, but again, thinking about more of a natural kind of feel for it. Same thing with the architectural materials. Few examples of those from around the area and other places, too. Thinking about landscaping, native species that require low maintenance. We're not trying to create a botanical garden. We're really just trying to create things that that reflect the natural area in terms of landscape and things that don't require a lot of maintenance. Native prairie plants, street furnishings, so thinking about all the amenities and having consistency throughout, really setting the stage here that that when you arrive here, you're someplace. You see the light fixtures. You see the some of the street furnishings. You see the sidewalks. You know, oh, I'm I'm definitely somewhere that's different here. Incorporating public art in a variety of ways. Water tower lighting. I'm not really sure how this one got in there, but it was it was a thing at the time.
There's a logo on our water tower now.
Yeah. Does it change lights? Does it do the colors change on it?
I don't think so.
It could. And then thinking about things that that people can enjoy as they're walking to or from someplace. So pathway features that may be boardwalks that change up the feel a little bit, fitness stations, things that could accommodate a variety of ages. And again, thinking about art and how we can tie that into. So from this, the next steps were creating the zoning standards that supported those concepts and creating some marketing materials. And so. There was, we did do a marketing brochure. This also was back in 2017, probably, with a lot of the same things. So it talks about the vision, though. It talks about township goals, what we're trying to accomplish. It has highlights of the location. So really, the what is so great about this area? There's a lot of things that are really great about this area. And how people can find out what's in the area. Just the overview of it, what the taxes were, the visibility, so highlighting the frontage along I-75, talking about the the water access, the sewer, and other utilities. Looking again at the different features that we had, the concepts for development in those three areas, some of the precedent images that we saw. And then some other market information that we just highlighted and put into this format. Highlighting the airports that are in the area and then other transportation. And then some of the incentives. Now, this is very dated. This is from 2016. So those but those were there to let people know that there were resources available to help them out. And then we had more information. Any questions on that so far?
It looks beautiful.
Familiar.
Well. Could you tell us how things have developed at the West Michigan or the Plymouth Township or the Prairie Stone in Chicago? Have those performed the way that it was thought?
I haven't looked. And actually, it's funny that you say that because as I was going through these just now, I was thinking, oh, it'd be interesting to check those out and see what's been happening in the last five years since we looked at it before. Those had been built prior to 2016. So they had been progressing. But I can I definitely can look those up and see what they've done since five years ago.
I was going to ask the exact same question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd love to know how they're performing and what they did well and what they didn't do well. So if there's information out there regarding that, that'd be great to see.
Absolutely.
I was also wondering about you're talking about the marketing.
I was also wondering about, you were talking about the marketing efforts that have been made. What kind of a response have we received from our, you know?
Well, I don't know if Jeremy wants to talk about any of the conversations, but you do have someone that does own that property now. They're exploring different options, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's all conceptual. We've seen some plans that mimic most of this. It's not exact. But until we get a master plan that's required per the ordinance, there's really nothing to present at this time. They do own both parcels. They are working on laying out the road and splitting off parcels and things of that sort. So once we start seeing some development on this, definitely, that's why we're having this refresher today, because we know this is coming soon, very soon. So we wanted to make sure that Jill and Giffel's team gave you guys kind of a refresher on what's to come.
Right. So my thought was to give you that background and then look at the ordinance just so that you can see, connect the dots again and see how, what the plan said in 2008, 2012, 2016 now is included in your plan as of, or the zoning ordinance, I think, 2018.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So that answers one of my questions because, you know, this kind of sounds like a, you know, you ask a kid for a Christmas list and they have a thousand things on there, and we're not going to get all of it, but apparently we have somebody who owns all this property knowing that this is our wish list. Okay? So they didn't scare him off, so that excites me a whole bunch. So really, what we're talking about here is putting it in writing, everything that we want in actual ordinances or...
We already have that. So we have, we have two districts. We've got the Tech Village Park District, and then we have the, oops, let me go back to it. So we've got several pages of that, oops, and then kind of walk you through. And then we have the Tech Village Center District. So the Park District is all of the research and development and the medical and the office. And then the Village Center is the Village Center.
So this is just a refresher course so that the developer who owns this knows everything we want. And when they bring us things, then we're going to say, that matched the ordinance and we're ready to go.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah. So we've, yeah, just to refresh you that there is, that there are ordinances that we have, and they're pretty detailed in terms...
Well, that's what I was saying about the Christmas list, and I was wondering if we were scaring everybody away because of our laundry list, but apparently not. We have somebody who's owned it.
No, it wasn't. We had, there was a, some developers from the East Coast pre-COVID, but then COVID hit, and then they backed out, and then they weren't interested coming back after COVID. And now we finally got a new local developer that's looking to develop the whole site as best they can to match this conceptual plan.
Right. Yeah, so we have somebody. That's fantastic. Do they know when they want to put a shovel in?
We were hoping that they were going to put a shovel in this fall, but that didn't happen, obviously. And there's some challenges to the site, wetlands, created some funding issues for some things. So it's just been a little bit of a battle to begin with. It's a little slow-going, but it's moving in the right direction now. They've got a, they've got Rhodes &amp; Johnson on the project, so that's a big, big step in the right direction to help kind of guide them through this process. As you know, they've done most of the work over at Enterprise Park, so they're well-aware of doing big projects, so.
Very exciting. Thank you. Very exciting.
Jill, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
I just, it came to me real quick, but an example I really like in West Michigan is Ada Village. A lot of redevelopment has taken on. It's a little different than your scenario where you're dealing with a private property and a full redevelopment plan with a prior property, but if you want to look, take a look at a way that like good traditional form architecture can take place in redevelopment is Ada Village, the way that that redevelopment project has kind of taken off in West Michigan here.
Yeah, and we can do a little bullet, a couple of bullets on that when we give you an update on those other ones. That'd probably be helpful. So I don't necessarily need to walk you through all of the many pages of the ordinance for these things, and I can see you're all like, oh, thank God you went through all of them. But I do want to kind of highlight a couple of things that I think are helpful. So in both districts, they're fairly similar in their structure. They both start with the intent. So what are we doing? And this is really important in our zoning ordinance because when the planning commission and township board are asked to make policy decisions, land use decisions, you're always looking at your master plan. And to the extent our ordinance gives us an intent statement, we want to know what it is to help us make the better decisions. So this is pretty detailed, and the Village Center District one is detailed as well. It talks about, in pretty general terms, well, somewhat specific terms, the mix of uses, what we're trying to accomplish. We envision this to be looking at, let's see, the continued, accommodating the continued growth and development of technology, medical, and manufacturing businesses that serve as economic drivers for Grambling Township, Genesee County, and the larger regions. So we recognize the value of this area and its importance, not only to the township, but regionally. And then how it works together with the Tech Village Center to provide a unique area for a mix of employment, housing, and commerce that taps into existing technology, medical and manufacturing businesses, as well as local institutions of higher learnings. We're hoping to encourage that, too. Talking about a sense of place that attracts young adults, educated and knowledge economy, and high-tech jobs, high-quality architectural design, and natural materials that visually and physically connect to the natural environment are intended. So when you're asked to vary one standard or another, which you very well may be, this is our home base. This is our touch point, like this is the foundation. So if modifications to the standards that are set forward in here still help you achieve those goals, then they may be worth considering. When, if you were to see something that was, well, we want to vary, we want to do something totally different, and our vision is a highway through the center, and then all kinds of pavements, warehousing, distribution, that's not the vision for this area, so. So looking at the different kinds of things, research park uses, housing, transportation, parking, place-making, sustainability, and technology. So those are the main categories that we have here. We do provide that in the ordinance that this is envisioned to be a planned unit development. So there, we're getting both the flexibility that you're able to offer and work with a developer on, as well as a, again, the foundation for the standards that you really do envision, and also then the development agreement that comes with that, that's then that contract between the township and the developer that gives, that provides for phasing, that allows for certain things to happen at different times. These ordinances, both Tech Village Park and Tech Village Center, are form-based code districts, and that means we're thinking more about the form of buildings and their placements on the lots and their placement in relation to roads and sidewalks, almost a little bit more than we are really worried about what's inside them. Because where the buildings are on the site and how they relate to streets and sidewalks, that's our public realm, and that's the area that we want to see people in a variety of modes of transportation. We want to see them on foot. We want to see them on bicycles. We want to accommodate them in vehicles as well. And those are the areas that we are able to create some of those different features, too, is our landscaping, some of our public gathering spaces, those are in there. And so that's why the placement of buildings on the sites is important, because that then frames that public realm area. And so that's what you'll see a lot in here. You've got your standard list of uses, just like you have in other districts. Some of them are special, and some of them are just permitted uses. But then you'll see some of these other features, like instead of thinking about a setback, we're talking about a build-to line. So instead of saying, it'd be a minimum of this many feet, we're saying, we want, your building needs to be here. And in this space that's here, we envision that to be landscape, or you could have put some other kind of area that's designated as a public or quasi-public space. And so you'll see that. You'll see some distances between buildings, and then we're thinking about those spaces between the buildings, too. And then it gives some other standards for that. And again, we don't need to go into all that. I do think it's worth noting, the minimum development size is 100 acres in Tech Village Park. That doesn't mean at all the 100 acres have to be developed at once. It means that we want to see a comprehensive plan for those 100 acres. And then development can happen in five-acre chunks, and the next section is minimum lot size is five acres. So that can be developed as it goes, but they have to be consistent with that overall concept, kind of like we would have seen at other developments that were planning in developments, too. Appearance standards, section on non-motorized transportation and the different forms and facilities that we would identify for that. Off-street parking. We do have EV charging in the Tech Village Park District. Again, thinking about this area as being a model or pilot for other technology or sustainability innovations that could be applied elsewhere. Looking at solar energy canopies, so allowing for that, parking structures if need be, accommodating outdoor storage, and talking about where that would be. Looking at elements in the rights-of-way, so multi-use paths, stormwater, landscape strip, the drive lanes, and being able to accommodate all those things as we go. Looking here at the approved bio-swell plant species, so we may look at this section, too, as long as we're looking at landscaping and make sure that we're not creating crazy incompatibilities with it. This is updated, too, because it may need to be. Looking at how a multi-use path may meander, so again, like reflecting back to some of those other developments that we saw that allowed for some of that relaxed approach. And then we get in the Tech Village Center District. Again, really, I'm going to zoom out on this one. So a very similar structure in terms of talking about the intent, talking about the development agreement, talking about our uses and our development standards. But here, not only are we talking about where the buildings go on the site, but we're also talking about the types of frontages that we want to see on the buildings. So we want to see more shop fronts, because here we really are trying to create almost like a little downtown. And so what are the building types that support that walkable, vibrant, pedestrian-oriented space? And there are things that are like shop fronts that have big ample windows. They might be like in the page on the right, a forecourt, so it's, a part of the building is setback, and maybe there we're going to have outdoor dining, or maybe we have some other kind of gathering space there that people can enjoy. And so we just go through a couple of those, the gallery, the arcades, there's different types, and you'd probably want to see different kinds of those things as you go through. Looking at, as we go up a building, some of the features that are important to have with that. Again, looking at off-street parking, service areas, and then looking at our right-of-way cross-section there, too. A little bit more on sidewalks and parking, and that's, I think that's the end of that section. Yeah, that's the end of that section. So I just wanted to give you that overview and kind of the highlights, tops of the waves kind of, that connect you from the, all the planning that's been done since 2008 to the language that's already in your ordinance, so that when you do see something, you'll know, you'll have a little bit more familiarity with the ordinance standards. Obviously, we can talk about those, too. So any questions on any of that?
I have a question about, are there open space requirements in the, yeah, because I, it's obviously been a long time since I've looked at the zoning ordinance.
I feel like I saw it in Tech, I almost, and I almost called it out, in the Tech Village Park. I remember seeing it on that little chart. It was down here. We have maximum building coverage of 35% and maximum impervious surface coverage of 60%. It's that, but...
Yeah. I mean, what I was thinking, I know in like the PUD-type developments, we encourage, you know, open spaces, common areas, and then, but I couldn't remember whether that was a factor in the Tech Village.
We have a lot of landscape standards. I don't know that we specifically have the open space standards, but a lot of the landscape standards, I think, would get you to a more planned approach to the open space.
Mr. Yancho?
So do I understand that you'll be coming back next month with some reports on how these other three?
Yeah.
You anticipate that you might also recommend any changes to our current ordinance or to...
I think it's probably, yeah, I think it is probably worth taking a look at it because it's been a number of years since we developed that, that we might take a peek at it and see if there's anything that we would recommend changing at this point. I was thinking about the parking, actually, as we were talking about it, and wondering if this is the area where we say, whatever you want, figure out where you're going to park it.
Well, and I think too, Mr. Chairman, I think there's going to be a lot of shared parking. If you look at the plan itself, there's going to be a lot of shared parking agreements that go into this to make sure that we don't have just this sea of parking spaces.
Right.
And make sure that we look at these peak employees and peak number of people, you know. Obviously, the restaurants and things like that, those will have to all be taken into consideration, but yeah, that's something that is something else that the shared parking is going to play a big factor in this development.
Yeah, and I think like cross-access would be something we want to take a look at and remind ourselves about that.
Yes. One of the things that has occurred to me as I drive around different communities and visit retail and so on, is the amount of communities that seem to require the back lots to be connected, so that you don't have so many entrances and entrances so that you can control that traffic better where they ingress and egress. Is that, I don't think we've discussed that, but...
You do have a pretty good section on access management in the ordinance, but that might be something that we look at again to see if there's anything that we need to increase the standards for it. But yeah, I think every time that you're looking at site plans, you should be looking for opportunities to connect cross-access in between sites, because, and I think that you would recognize that as a big benefit, if you don't have to drive back out onto the road at risking turning right or left just to go to the next building over.
You can connect them so they all exit at a light or something.
Exactly. Right. Right. I mean, I think you can look at, on Holly Road, the hotels there and the Taco Bell and the Culvers, and how we have that little service frontage road that does, exactly what that's for, was to accommodate that, so people didn't have to come out and in and out.
Don't have a driveway at each individual location.
Mr. Chairman, can, to Mr. Yancho's point, have you ever been to Bertrand Outlets?
Not in a long time.
Okay. It's kind of open concept, and you can traverse. They have one main, or two main roads that go in and out of the complex with lights and things like that out to the main road, but then you can traverse between all the shops without ever getting back on a main road. And so I kind of feel, I feel this has a similar feel to that, yes.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for the update. There's no further questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
That helped.
And that'll bring us to committee reports.
No ZVA.
No ZVA we need to report on?
No.
I don't have a report from a committee, but I do have some tree owners' manuals that I acquired while we were at our planning seminar. So I only have three of them left, and so for whoever would like one. Subsequent to that planning, thank you, I signed up for a green energy tour. So I took a bus trip, and we explored a wind generation farm in Grastock County and a solar farm in Chaiwasi County, and I have three information packets for anybody that's interested in those.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay, there we go. Don't make that right all night. You're okay. Motion adjourned and seconded by Mr. Andre. And we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You can adjourn. Thank you.